Call the organizational meeting of the Westonka School Board to order. If everybody would please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the firing of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Heidi, Dave, and Brian please stand.
And Ralph.
And Ralph, excuse me. So I, as clerk, I'm gonna swear all four of you in. David, your first term, and Brian and Ralph and Heidi to continuing your terms. So yeah, raise your hand, thank you. And if all of you will repeat after me, I swear.
I swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of independent school district number 277.
Of independent school district number 277.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Yay!
I was saying I could say amen, but it's not amen. Thank you, Lord. Congratulations, you guys. Chair moves for approval of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we will go into the nomination or election of officers. First one is nomination for school board chair. The chair calls for nominations of the school board chair. I would nominate Gary Wilber for another term as chair.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations for school board chair? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for your trust. I look forward to another year. Chair calls for nomination of vice chair. I would like to nominate Heidi.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. The chair calls for nominations for the school board clerk.
I would like to nominate Lauren Davis.
I'll second.
Any other nominations, clerk? As I'm faithfully signing documents here.
Doesn't expire just yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Lauren. And chair calls for nomination self treasurer. I would nominate Ralph Harrison for another term.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? None? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. The chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Chair moves for the adjournment of the organizational meeting, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Move on to the regular meeting. I call the January regular meeting of the Westonka School Board to order. Chair moves for approval of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Announcements. Facilities committee meeting January 17th, 7:00 a.m., right here in this room. Teaching and Learning Special Board meeting January 26th, 7:30, in conference room A. Finance Committee meets February 1st, 7:30. They're gonna do that by Zoom. February 5th, Policy Committee meeting, 5:30 p.m., prior to the regular board meeting. And the board meeting will be at 6:00 p.m. right here. And at this time, I would like to invite Jolene and Jeff Peterson up to the podium to share their success.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, and thank you for allowing Ms. Herfall and I to be here tonight. We have some really exciting things to share, and the first one that we'll share is our 2023-2024 Excel Award recipients. The Excel Award is an award through the State High School League that centers around excellence in community, education, and leadership. It's a unique recognition program designed exclusively for Minnesota high school juniors who are active in school activities, leaders in their schools, and who demonstrate a strong commitment to community service. I'd like to invite Stella and Isaac Hayes to come on up. The nomination criteria is you have to be a junior. You've gotta make satisfactory progress towards graduation, and these two are well beyond that. Participate in Minnesota State High School League Fine Arts and/or Athletic Activities. Hold leadership positions within our school, as well as volunteer in our community. Stella Minor, parents Jim and Stephanie. And Isaac Hayes, parents Dan and Jenny. Are outstanding representatives for this award this year. Isaac carries a 4.0 GPA. He's involved in cross-country, Nordic, track and field, band council, FCA, a bunch of other stuff. And is a captain in cross-country as well as Nordic. Isaac has volunteered at the Westonka Food Shelf, Westwood Church, Westonka Community Garden, Humanity Alliance, Westwood Apprenticeship, and Mission Teams. Stella carries a 3.9 GPA, is involved in soccer, Nordic, track and field, is captain in Nordic. She's highly involved in Student Council, NHS. I should go back. Highly involved in Student Council to the point where she's gonna be covering for her sister tonight, Natalie. Natalie was also a recipient of this award last year. FCA, head of the weekend drive, DECA officer, international qualifier, two times. I did not know that until I read that in your nomination form, and in Link Group. She volunteers, does volunteer work at Weekend, the Lopit Organization, Rotary, teaching Bible lessons and sharing stories, and the Like a Girl Project. It's clear that both Stella and Isaac are tremendous representatives and role models for our other students in the classroom, our community, and they both provide great leadership along the way. Congratulations. Just gonna invite them up here, just wanted a time to share a little bit about their experiences here at Mount Westonka. Isaac?
Yeah, just ever since I moved here in ninth grade, I just felt greatly accepted by like all the teachers and the staff and the students. And it's just been a great time, just getting to do all the different activities and sports and, yeah, just, it's been a great couple of years. Thanks.
So I think our small school opportunities, or small school advantages, big school opportunities is really exemplified in Isaac and I here. It's really great to have opportunities to hold leadership positions and be involved in so many things, not just having to pick one or two things and really devote all your time to them. So I really appreciated having that amount and the support from our administration on being involved in so many things and doing everything to the best of your abilities.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Job. Congratulations, Mr. Job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, next, this is a hot mic, I can hear Jeff's voice, and then as he stand up here, it's really exciting. So next, I have the pleasure and opportunity to share with the school board and our guests here this evening, our AAA recipients. So if I could please have these two wonderful students come on up here, Cormac and Cassie, come on up. So the AAA Award is a wonderful award. Again, it is organized and sponsored through the Minnesota State High School League, and it is specifically recognizing seniors in the middle of their senior years, they're getting ready to kind of wrap up with their schools and go on to what is their next stage of life, but it really recognizes students that are well-rounded, specifically looking at strength in academics, strength within athletics, as well as the arts. So it is a little bit of that rare find of a student, especially nowadays, I think it's much more common, that students start to, they really start to specialize. And from sometimes very young on, they specialize in different areas. And this award is something that the State High School League, along with local schools, including ours, want to honor students and families that support their students, because moms and dads who are here, you have done plenty throughout the years to drive them, to take them, to do all the fundraisers, to do all the things that they've done throughout the years, including all the studying on a regular evening. So it's an activity, athletic and arts recognition, and really focusing on that well-rounded, being able to maintain balance throughout their high school years, and not just maintain balance, but maintain balance at an incredibly high level. And these two students exemplify our AAA for Mount Westonka this year. I'm going to share a couple specific facts about them. Again, they are seniors, and I'll have them share in a little bit what it has meant to be involved in the wide variety of things that they have been while they've been here. So Cassie Nemeczek, daughter of Jackie and Lawrence, is an outstanding representative and role model for others. Cassie wrote in her nomination form, and she said, "You will never find out if you don't try." This is a quote that very much exemplifies how she chooses to live her life, and is very eager, and we hear it from teachers, advisors, and coaches, that she's very quick to say, "You know what? I'll give it a try, I'll step up," even sometimes when other students are not doing that. Cassie is a three-sport athlete at Mount Westonka, participated in cross-country for three years, dance for five years, and track and field for six years. So incredibly busy every day after school. In addition, she is also highly involved in the visual arts, specifically in our ceramics one and two classes. And teacher Mrs. Parre writes that Cassie demonstrates a high level of excellence, which is truly commendable. Cassie is also in National Honor Society with a leadership role as communications chair, and also carries a GPA of 3.92, and has taken four AP classes over the course of her years with us. So when you think of all of those things I just listed, she's doing all of those at a very high level, which is incredibly challenging for any adult, much less a teenager navigating her high school years. So congratulations, Cassie. So Cormac, some school board members will recognize him, he's been here before, son of Kristen and Paul. He is our male recipient of the AAA, so I'll share some of the different facts of what he has accomplished over his four years with us. Cormac has taken seven AP courses and carries a 4.0 GPA. He has participated in band for four years, robotics for five years, and visual arts for two, as well as soccer and Alpine skiing for four years each. Cormac says that his involvement in the activities above have allowed him to grow both socially and personally, and he has learned the importance of being well-rounded as he transitions between high school and into college and beyond. Teacher Mr. Kimble, robotics coach, says that Cormac will keep working until he figures it out. He is persistent and never gives up on challenges. Cormac also holds a leadership position within our robotics program and goes above and beyond what a teacher would expect of any student. Congratulations, Cormac. So prior to them coming up here, I asked them to think a little bit about what it has meant to be involved in so many different activities as you get to that point where they're, as we are here in January, thinking about now graduation, cap and gown orders, thinking about graduation parties, all those different things. But I'd like each of them just to share, as seniors getting ready to wrap up their senior year, a little bit about what it has meant for them to be involved in a wide variety of activities.
So for me, I think especially is that, basically, like some students, like she said, specialize in certain things. Either it's sports, or it's education stuff, or just certain activities like robotics. But by being able to participate in all of them, I've gotten to know about a lot of the students around the school from all age groups, and just gotten to know my fellow classmates and students. So yeah, that was probably the biggest influence that had on me.
It has been so amazing. I have gained so many amazing connections with all the staff at our school, which has really broadened my worldview. In my sports, I've gained such close connections with all my teammates, and I really look up to my coaches. And I've been trying to attend all of the club meetings that I can this year, and in doing that, like Cormac said, I have talked to so many people that I might not have and learned their views and opinions. So that's just been really amazing, and I'm very grateful that I've gotten to experience it.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations. Can you stick your finger? It's really touchy. Okay, there we go. So before I hand it back over to Jeff for another student that we want to recognize, when we look at the Excel and the AAA, I just want to take a moment and thank the school board, thank the community members that are here, and thank the parents that are here. The experiences that our students have do not exist without the support of U.S. school board members, the community members, and especially parents who are here this evening. It is tirelessly a commitment to be able to support your children. When you think way back from those first years, of maybe when you're getting ready to go to preschool or to kindergarten, and now you're at this point where you hear four students up here talk about the different experiences that they've had. So I just want to thank the parents, I don't know, I don't know Emily if we're gonna get it right between there. I just want to thank the parents for everything that you do to support our students, because we are fully aware that without your support as parents at home and on weekends, in summers, during the holidays, when they maybe have a high-high or a low-low, you as a parent are there and are incredibly appreciative of that, so thank you. And school board, thank you for the support that you give us so we can provide the opportunities to our students. The classes are absolutely wonderful, and our AAA recognizes those academic pieces, but having those additional opportunities for students just enriches their experience with us and ultimately enriches their experience as they move into adulthood, so thank you for the support. I will hand it over now to Jeff for one more recognition.
Thank you. I also would say thank you for the support. All of those echo what Jolene shared. I would share, not Jolene's fault, because I helped write Cassie and Cormac's information, but I forgot to add in there that Cassie's brother Lance was our 2022 AAA recipient as well. So kind of cool stuff when you get siblings that are able to do that. So congratulations to parents for that as well. So our next recognition is also super exciting and did not want to miss out on the opportunity to recognize this young man. But Cooper Rowe, parents Matt and Melanie. Cooper had, well, he caused me to have to fill out some paperwork with the State High School League that I'd never actually filled out before. Cooper participated in some pretty awesome and unique wrestling experiences just slightly outside of the start of our wrestling season that you might say, "Man, how can a kid do that and still be eligible to wrestle in high school?" Thankfully, somebody said, "Hey, Jeff, you need to fill out this form with the State High School League and then send it in for their approval to make sure Cooper doesn't lose any eligibility." So anyways, Cooper Rowe, he represented Team USA in the U-15 Pan Am Wrestling Championships, which were held in Panama City, Panama. Cooper went 4-0 in freestyle competition at 68 kilograms, which I think is around 150?
Yeah.
Right around 150. He won the gold, and he also earned the golden boot as the outstanding wrestler in that competition. Cooper also went 4-0 in the Greco-Roman competition, earning another gold medal, helping Team USA to win a championship in both styles. Cooper's currently a sophomore at Mount Westonka High School. He's placed third and fifth in the State High School League State Wrestling Tournament the last two seasons. We had matches last week, and unfortunately, for whatever reason, I just stepped out of the gym at the wrong time and missed his matches, but I'm not gonna do that on Friday. He's really fun to watch wrestle. If you have a chance, Friday at 5:00, we've got a couple of schools coming to take us on. So congratulations to Cooper. I'm gonna also ask Cooper to just share a little bit about that experience that he had, so.
Yeah, that experience down there was really fun. It was really nice, get a little break from school and go wrestle with some friends. Pretty high-level competition, and yeah, it was just really fun.
How do you qualify for that?
Oh, first I had to go to Las Vegas for the first qualifier, and then if I placed at that tournament, I went to a tournament in Denver, Colorado, and I had to win both of them there to qualify for the team. And that's what I did.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I loved it, and that's what I did. I'm gonna make a shirt out of that, Cooper. Thank you so much for allowing us to share the successes of our five students here today. Again, thank you for the support. Thanks, Jeff.
At this time, we'll go into public comments. Are there any members of the public that wish to come in for the board to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address. If you want, you could stand there, too. That's fine. We didn't know you were present.
This is a, I think this is a good occasion.
Okay.
Well, then they can all see the crutches. Besides, it's kind of fun to hide the accordion.
These are the most festive crutches.
They are. I have eight pairs. Okay. So. I, oh, there in miles. I am Becky Plowman, I'm a tennis pro for a bazillion years in Mount Westonka, or Rebecca Hawn, a photographer, who cares? I'm here as a person who moved into, on Sunnyfield Road in 1982, and happily paying my taxes all these years and investing in all of the families that worked with me as a tennis pro. I'm still and remain a photojournalist for the Lake Nantucket Lifestyle Magazine as well. So I'm communicating with the public on a regular basis. Last night, it was brought to my attention that there was a highly important piece of information that I wasn't given as a resident, and my house is the house that is closest to the bus barn. If you don't know where that is, it's just down Sunnyfield across from the tennis courts. So what I need to say is, not just myself, but other neighbors on Sunnyfield Road never got any information about the referendum, any information at all about what was proposed to be built at all. Now, if you go back in time when you, when Mr. Walden, you were not in this position, Jim Zilik was the superintendent of the schools. There was an attempt to buy up a bunch of property or take our properties through MM Domain, which didn't succeed because the referendum was not voted in, it was voted out. Now, this is the same thing, they want to enlarge different facilities, 12 courts, et cetera, but they're moving different things here and there. As a result of them moving things here and there, it affects people like myself, my property, because the 12 courts will now go right alongside my property, right where the fences, right up there alongside, with the lights, with all of the action, et cetera, which is not what I paid for years ago when I bought our land. Other things, since you, I don't know anybody here besides my neighbors here who actually live on Sunnyfield Road here, but it is extremely dangerous because of the high school kids that drive up and down. Talk to the police department. They speed, there's accidents, they go off in the ditch, they rent in our property. I've seen it over and over and over. It's not what I would consider to be a safe place to live, and now the school is coming closer. And it's loud, and it's dangerous. But more importantly, as a person who's a naturalist for many reasons, all of the trees that will be taken down, I have an issue with that as well, because we didn't pay when we bought this place years ago. We did not pay for that, for our view. We will now have light in all of our windows at night if there's somebody playing tennis on the court. And by the way, I'm a tennis pro, if you don't know that, so it's not like I hate tennis, okay? But, well, not right now, but when I get better, probably play some more tennis. But it is particularly upsetting because I went across the street to talk to Barbara Ruland today, and she says, "You know, I did hear something about what they intended to do. I think I heard that they were going to move the football field. But the only notice that we got was vote yes or vote no, and it was going to be something like, 'This is to enhance the future of your children.'" Well, she has smaller children, so hmm, if you don't stay up on all this stuff, you have a tendency not to know what you're voting for a lot of times, and everybody's guilty of that. And you just say, "Okay, well, do I want the kids to have a better future?" Well, yeah, absolutely. My son graduated from here, my daughter did too. Very involved, number one tennis player from here, got a scholarship because of it. So I'm pro Mount Westonka all the way until this, because now with what they intend to do, my property, since this has already passed, my property will be devalued, because this will be right up in, if we have to sell, if we decide to sell, it would be right there, right up in our faces, the whole thing, and we didn't buy into that to begin with. So it's an issue of concern, but what's most concerning, if this was you standing here right now talking about this, would you have a problem if all of a sudden this big development, this 93-point-something million dollars was awarded to a district and they were gonna make these changes over 25 years? But they didn't tell you about it, and your property is the one that it affects the most, and you did not know anything about it. And I stay involved with many things around here, with families, with their kids. So I wanted to bring it to the attention that as I gather more and more information from, so far, no one I've talked to, other than Larry Gillette, who's my next-door neighbor, who you know because he sold you some land to do this, other than Larry Gillette, so far, I don't know anyone that found out this information, and I wanted to bring that to you, because this is not okay. This is the kind of thing that gets investigated, and I just feel really sad about it because I've been so loyal all of these years, Orno and Mount, I was there for 30 years. I just feel really let down by this organization, and I've never addressed the school board before, but I felt I just found out about it and it was that important to me to let you know that this is not okay, to do this to people, without talking to them about, without letting people on Sunnyfield when they're directly gonna be impacted by it, without letting them know exactly what your plan is. But we have found out now. We're doing some homework today, we found out what's going on, and I'm sorry to say, I'm just really disappointed in the school system, school board, for doing that. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that wants to go to the board?
Hi, good evening. I'm Tom Notch, been in the district since 85 and you guys, I've been emailing you information, hopefully been looking at some of the links and the things I've been sending you guys. But I do believe that our district has been poorly served by Wold Architects, in my opinion. And basically, they did like a demographic study and in that study, it's page 42 of the review and comment, and in there, they didn't even realize that the high school had grades eight through 12 in it. They thought it was grades nine through 12. And Wold, then they were looking earlier, I got some emails from Kevin here and thank you for sending those over, Kevin, up from Wold, and they were looking at an option for a middle school. And the middle school they were looking at, you know, was on a new site down the road kind of thing if they really needed to from an enrollment point of view. But I'm looking at the way this is all going and to me, it's a very obvious decision, I hate saying the word no-brainer decision, you all are thinking people and I get that, but I just think that we've been given bad information from Wold. And here's what I'm suggesting we do, and if you've looked at my stuff that I sent you, you know this, if you just saw Notch on there and hit delete, you probably don't know, but I just wanted to explain a little bit. So what I'm promoting is if we were to build a new middle school at this time with the funds that was just approved, and we can do that, and I went through the numbers on it, and it's going to be about the same amount of money, might even be a little less to do that, and we build a middle school 33% larger than what Grandview currently is, and what that'll allow us to do would be to take the eighth grade out of the current high school building. So basically, it'd be the same thing as having 25% more area in the high school building by doing that. And when you do that, you eliminate the need for doing all these additions, they've got five of them around the different, you know, three or four different sides of the high school. And as a structural engineer for 50 years, those are very, very expensive additions. Cost per square foot's about four times what a new building is. So if you start looking at all the funds here, and I took out then, the money that was earmarked for Grandview for the deferred maintenance, I took out the money that was for Grandview for the security upgrades, and then I took out the 47.1 or 2 million that was at the high school and that was just for the additions and remodeling at the high school. I left in all of the money that was there for the fields, athletic fields, the improvements at the hockey, you know, arena here, all the rest of that stills all in there. The security increase, I mean, the new entries are on there, they're still in there because that was part of the security money on that. But if we do this, we can build a new middle school and we've got enough property here. I went through the acreage and there is a possibility we could buy some space, you know, to the north here if we did need, there's another 20 acres sitting there and if you had to, I'm sure we could get other land, but you shouldn't need to. But looking through all the acreages that we have, there's enough space here to do it and to me, it really, really makes sense. We could have a brand-new building for these kids. And like I say, this review and comment was a concern for me and like I say, and I talked to the architect on it after the facility meeting and, you know, basically he said, well, that was just a typo. Well, it wasn't a typo. In this email I got from Kevin here from the architect, they're talking about this other option here, says, as I mentioned, it would be possible to tear down parts of Grandview and build some new areas to eliminate some of the limitations of that building. For a new middle school, we would budget approximately, he says, 70 to 75 mil, this would be total budget with land, technology, and furniture. Assume allowance about 2 mil for land acquisition. Not familiar with land costs in your district, this is a guess. You'd want something between 40, 60 usable acres, that's way more than what is required or suggested by the state on how they want it. But he says, we assumed this new middle school would be grades six through eight, the new middle school, six through eight. So this isn't even, this whole thing doesn't make sense. If we were to keep grades, just the grades right now, if you went six through nine in the middle school, like right now, hang on. So if I look at, let me go to Wold's thing, I'm getting mixed up here, I'm sorry.
Tom, can you?
I'll summarize quick.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. I just got this from Kevin this afternoon, so I'm not prepared. Okay, good intentions, here's what I did. But at any rate, so the thing from Wold, this is the one I was referring to, this page right here, and it's page 42 in the review and comment. And if you look at it, they've got all this, the grades are all listed here, they say nine through 12 is in the high school, they say six through eight is in the middle schools, it's actually five sevens, you know, and they got K through five in the elementary schools, it's really K through four. If we were to just make a middle school larger, you'd eliminate having to do this down the road and it's obvious that that's kind of on the radar here. Again, they're already kind of talking about it here, you know. So to me, it's, if you look at all the numbers, the benefits, getting the eighth grade out of the high school, minimizing the disruption of a two-to-three-year construction cycle because it's a lot easier building on a site away from where all the activity is and you get all your classes and kids still around, so you can only work on it in the summer. If you did a whole new middle school, you could work on that around the clock, you know, for the year, you know what I mean? So it could get done quicker. And talking to people, the only thing I've heard is that you want to make sure we deliver what people thought they were promised, you know, with the additions and that on the building. But if you look at the way that this was, I'm sorry, if you look at the language here, here we go. So if you look at the language defining the project and it would be on page 4, 16, and 20, in addition, that's in the review and comment, and then the actual bond question on page 135 in the review and comment document, it does give the district latitude to change the direction of the project as long as it is for, quote, "the acquisition and betterment of school sites and facilities," quote. So my point is, if it really makes sense, and it does, I guarantee you it does to do this, because we can get a lot more bang for the buck and you're not going to have to go back to the public in five, 10 years from now to try to get a middle school because you'll have the problem solved. So I sure hope that you look at some of the information I've presented, it's not too late to change. All the things you already approved for having construction, you know, in the upcoming summer has nothing to do with this, it's all fields and things, all that's in the same budget, nothing changed there. That's what I wanted to tell you guys. And if you've got any questions, feel free to email me, call me. And I've been in the district, I want to see the district do well and I'm just concerned too, if we're thinking we're going to be able to go back to the well and get more funds down the road, it's not going to be that easy. This thing barely, barely passed and had it been done in an even year election, you know, we all know that it really wouldn't have passed, okay? So we've got to be sensitive.
Thank you, Tom.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I've been here since 64 and this is farmland. Anyway, I received a packet from the school last time we had a meeting, it was a good thing they sent it, I appreciate it, it was a good start. I'd like to see the rest of it as far as the cost of the boilers, the plumbing, some of that stuff. I got a kick out of this report from Wold and Carl Sanderson. They talk in here about consensual scope, preliminary planning, budget estimating, final scope after the referendum, we'll get some numbers together, informational escalation. Now, I've been bidding plumbing and heating for 45 years. I couldn't even think about putting in a statement like that. That's throwing darts, just throwing darts. Anyway, I would like to know what the costs are for the boilers, because there's a company that rebuilds boilers for a tenth of the price of what you're planning on replacing them. Hot water heat is not a good investment, kind of like geothermal, it's a fallacy. But anyway, these companies rebuild the boilers for Buffalo School District, Waconia, Minnetaka, Eden Prairie, Bloomington, all down the line, and they do a good job at a tenth of price. Any boiler can be rebuilt for less than 100. Here a bean collar, Brian, you know what it costs for money and stuff like that, where it put it. If you don't get investment in your money, don't do it. Shirley Hills was an example. Previous referendum, we looked at the cost of rebuilding the boiler, it was 50,000 at that time. They spent 11 million to replace it with hot water. That's a joke. It's a joke. Anyway, I always get a kick out of the stuff that costs for deferred maintenance. What is deferred maintenance on a high school? I'd like to know what that is. Is that the cost of the boilers, the plumbing, and everything else? To me, it's kind of like smoking mirrors. Talked to the people up at Gillespie Center a while back before Mindy left and she said that Kevin was up there giving a presentation prior to this in July and nobody showed up to speak, it was advertised, and when you're asked a lot of questions, Kevin, you didn't get any definite answers. It was kind of like general money we're going to spend on general stuff. No specific numbers on the boiler, the plumbing, on the piping. I'd like to have a tour of the mechanical rooms. I've talked to a lot of different contractors and they would like to know just how much copper pipe or galvanized pipe there is. I've worked in all the schools in Minnetaka, Waconia, Arlayda Lake, and their galvanized piping seems to hold up, but I think this school's full of copper. And I don't think you'd take the copper out to put copper back in. Now, the fact that if this stuff is working, when I talked to the maintenance guy briefly last meeting, I asked him how the boilers are working, he says, fine. And Kevin stepped up, kind of didn't want me talking to him. I'd like to visit with him for a little bit and take a look at some of the stuff along some of the other contractors I've talked to. And I would appreciate that, I mean, it's a public school and out of hours or whenever it works, if he'd give me a call. The other thing I was wondering about, I got, niece's husband teaches over Orno, I get over to Waconia, Watertown, my son lives over there, and the parking lots don't have a big forest in front of them. And I don't know if I was involved in sports or going to a lot of the games or the art center or whatever it may be, I wouldn't want to walk from that tennis court to all these activities. I'd build a parking lot right out here between the football field and your driveway. It's just a bunch of trees, you're going to take them down any house sometime to build a parking lot or ball diamond or whatever. Put your parking lot out here close to the football stadium, close to the ball diamonds, the soccer fields, the baseball field, and the art center. To me, that makes sense. But anybody could give me some more information on the cost of these boilers, the cost of these plumbing, the cost of the sewer. Now, somebody's, in this one report, it says plumbing sewage drainage. Is it inside the building, outside the building? Are you going to jackhammer the floors out, tear out the walls and ceiling? I can't believe that this happened in a school this young. There's old schools like Harvard, Yale, University of Minnesota, that plumbing's holding up pretty good. The one thing that didn't happen real good is when they built this school on the northwest corner some years ago, I think it was only four or five years ago, I'd drive by it every day, they didn't put a footing in in the corner and the wall was settling. I don't know if it was Carl Sanderson or who it was that put it up, but if you're dealing with contractors like that, I would think twice about hiring again. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question. Mr., if I may ask a question here.
Yeah.
Is that okay? I read on your website, on the school board website, that it said that for a year, that this was researched on whether to do this or not for a year. I'd like to, it didn't say who did the research, I'd like to find that out, and then it also said, and also talking to people in the public. I'd like to know who did the talking to the people in the public and where are the findings for all of that? Instead of just saying, oh yeah, hundreds of people said this is great. I'd like to have that information on who the company was, was it professional that did all this research for a year before you guys pitched this idea? Is that, do you think that's a legitimate, fair question?
I can get you an answer.
That'd be awesome, Kevin. Love that.
Yep. Throwing darts.
Would you include all mailings that went out as well?
Yeah.
What, I didn't hear?
I asked him to include all, a list of all the mailings that went out too.
You know, that would be really helpful and...
Yeah, I heard you say you didn't get those and I wanted to have a list of those.
Nobody did get them.
I had no idea, so...
So I can't even comment on them? I can't say, well, this wasn't good enough? I can't say anything because we haven't seen anything. So I don't know, like Barbara Ruland said today, she says, well, I think it was just a little flyer that said vote yes or vote no and then what I already told you. But no information on really what you were doing and so she was shocked. They had an appointment tonight, otherwise they would be here. They had to work on a living will. Anyhow, the point is, we need some more information on how this all happened without, under our noses.
Kevin said he'll get that.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Everybody I've talked to, nobody got that information. Nothing definite.
All right, we're going to move on to the student rep reports, Stella.
Hello, as you said, I'm filling in for my sister, so some updates on what's going on in the school. For our activities, Student Senate had our weekend drive from December 6th through December 13th and we collected 263 personal care products and cleaning supplies, 47 pounds of food and over $510 in financial donations. The next Student Senate activity is the snowball dance, which takes place on February 3rd and we have begun to plan it out. The DECA District's competition was held yesterday, January 7th, at Bloomington Jefferson High School and a record of 169 MWHS DECA members made it to the state competition, which takes place March 10th through 12th at the High Urgency in Minneapolis. I was also elected to be the 2024 and 2025 State DECA Officer. Robotics team has been in session and the team is working towards their next competitions. Math league is ranked first in their conference and second in their section. Some top scorers for the team include Cormac Schaefer, Ingrid Wolf, Tor Erdol, Tanner Bloom, and Rohan Nella. The speech team has started practice for their season. The team is led this year by captains Thomas Duggan, Mason Blutzau, August Lang, and Hannah Christensen. They will host an omelet breakfast fundraiser on Sunday, January 14th at the American Legion. The team will compete at their first speech meet on Saturday, January 20th. The National Honor Society is continuing to meet monthly and are looking forward to some events coming up in the spring. The Environmental Club just hosted a Christmas Kiss fundraiser during lunches at the high school to raise money on December 19th. They're continuing to meet bi-weekly. Rotary is preparing for their Stick It To Hockey Tournament in February. For arts, MWHS Theater's one-act play, cast and crew have been in rehearsals since before winter break. They will compete at the subsection competition on Saturday, January 27th at Chasta High School. The show Kodachrome will have a free public performance on Saturday, January 12th, but time is to be determined. MWHS Theater is also beginning the audition process with Spring Musical Footloose, which in April. Auditions will be Thursday, January 18th. 10 band students were selected to represent MWHS at the WCC Honor Band this past week. These students included Trevor Andrews, Aspen Christensen, Hannah Christensen, Ava Dam, Riza Mendoza, Christopher Nelson, Calvin Buchne, Selena Rothenberger, August Schaefer, and Joseph Wolf. Seven choir students traveled this weekend to the Dorian Festival at Luther College in Iowa. Students included Jack Hampson, Thomas Duggan, Mason Blutzau, Joseph Wolf, Mackenzie Frederickson-Stevens, Rupay Moi, and Dejana Milan. Stella Minor and Isaac Hayes were named our Scouts of Sallowood winners. Cassie Novacek and Cormac Schaefer were the name of the triple. Cassie Novacek and Cormac Schaefer were the name of the Triple A Award winners. Big mystery here. The boys, women, dive teams had their first meet on December fourteenth. Wyatt Helms, Aaron Omdar, Bryce Helms, and Shane Dolder broke the team's four-hundred-meter relay record. Girls hockey is having a great season with a record eleven-five to one and playing very difficult teams. Boys hockey is a month into their season and has improved greatly from last year with a record of five to six. Boys basketball had a great start to their season with a record of four to four. December sixteenth was Coach Andre's one-hundredth win in his seventh year with our program. Girls basketball has a record of zero and eleven. They're in transition, they're in a transition year with a new coach and many younger players. The Hawk Ebs Dance Team just competed in the Best of the Best Show at the University of Minnesota on Friday, January fifth. They had other competition on Saturday, earning first in varsity kick and third in varsity jazz. The wrestling team just had their first home match on Thursday, January fourth. They are three and two on the season. The Nordic Ski Team had their first meet on December fourteenth. A lack of snow has created tough conditions for training and competitions. The All-Pines Ski Team is also starting their season strong. They are led by August Schaefer and are also facing a lack of snow so far. There, that's my update.
Thank you.
Were you standing in for your sister tonight?
Yes, she is at hockey practice. She calls.
You're a good sister.
Oh yeah, you said you can't even tell the difference.
Okay, we'll move on to the treasures report, Ralph.
We'll begin with November twenty-three. Blackwater Giving Fund for Hilltop Primary School, fifty dollars. Northwest Mountain Lions Hilltop Primary School Playground, five thousand five hundred dollars. Hilltop PTA Hilltop Primary School Playground, seventy-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Everall Low Shirley Hills Primary School, twenty dollars. Blackwater Giving Fund, Mount Westonka High School, forty dollars. Charity's Aid Foundation, Mount Westonka High School, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Westonka Basketball Boosters, MW Boys Basketball, thirty-five hundred dollars. Westonka Basketball Boosters, MW Girls Basketball, thirty-four hundred dollars. Butch Humbert Larry XL Memorial Scholarship, one hundred dollars. Lacrosse Boosters, Boys Lacrosse Club, one thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Kelly Holton Christensen Law Firm for First Robotics Club, one thousand dollars. And Friends of Westonka High School, First Robotics Club, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. For December twenty-three, we start with Sharon Thaler, Westonka Wings, five thousand dollars. UMR Inc., Westonka Wellness, Wellness Credits, credits, five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty cents. Anonymous Hilltop Primary School, forty dollars. Hennepin County Hilltop Primary School Youth Sports Grant, twenty-five thousand dollars. Everly Farms LLC Shirley Hills Primary School, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Shirley Hills PTO Shirley Hills Primary School, four thousand four hundred and two dollars. GMS, GMSPTO Grandview Middle School, one thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ten cents. Charity's Aid Foundation for Mount Westonka High School, eighty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. Anonymous Community Ed Sponsor Student, one hundred and fifty dollars. Anonymous, MWC Winter Variety Show, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and ten cents. Mighty Cause Charitable Foundation, MWC, WTC, I'm sorry, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Jay Soul Alman's Student Scholarship, fifteen hundred dollars. Butch Humbert Larry XL Memorial Student Scholarship, one hundred dollars. And Ted and Carrie Wojcik, Nordic Ski Team, three hundred dollars. Year-to-date, two hundred and twenty-six thousand and thirty-three dollars and fifteen cents have been donated to the school. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I've looked at the check ledger and register and all seems to be in order.
Thanks a lot, Ralph. Are there any committee reports? None, then we'll move on to the financial report, Kathy.
Excuse me, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to our new board member. Tonight I'll be giving just a brief business services report. And that will be, excuse me, we'll jump right into the enrollment. As of January first, twenty twenty-four, we are serving two thousand four hundred and three students, which is exactly the same number we did the prior year. And so you can see by looking at the chart, we've had really stable enrollment this school year, so we're really happy with that and again, really pleased. Revenue and expenditures through the end of the calendar year. Revenue, we have collected ten million eight hundred and twenty thousand or twenty-nine point one percent of our adopted budget, which is thirty-seven million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand. You can see that's pacing similar to the prior year and the second prior year expenditures. We had expended sixteen million six hundred and three thousand or forty-four percent of our adopted budget of thirty-seven million seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, happy with being halfway through the fiscal year where things are pacing. Other items going on in the business office are pretty much related around budget. We are in the final stages of reviewing the revised budget, which you will be seeing next board meeting. And at the same time, the adopted budget for next school year, those initial assumptions and estimates, information gathering is underway, and that will be presented on June tenth. All of this information, in addition to other agenda items, will be reviewed at the February first Board Finance Committee meeting, and look forward to seeing everybody on Zoom at seven thirty. Two items that will be on your agenda later this evening. One is the, we've received a renewal quote for our audited services for Bergen KDB, that's a three-year quote. And also, you'll see an action item for our budget calendar, which is our financial roadmap for next school year. This time then, I'll open it up to any questions.
How'd you get that student count right on the button like that?
I'm half-Irish, I guess, so that's my, my trick. Speaking of Irish and luck, I'd like to take this time now to introduce Matt Hammer of Ellers. He will be presenting a summary of the twenty-four bond sale report. And before I turn it over to Matt, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank him on behalf of the school for his service to us and his partnership and his team as well. They provided amazing service, so thank you, Matt.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. And I'll just kind of touch high level. There's a lot that goes into the bond sale process, and Kevin and Kathy were outstanding to work with through that process. So we have to compile a lot of information to get the documents ready to go out to market. And we were out to market this morning at nine-thirty and had really outstanding results to share. I think if we go back prior to the election, we're right on track with the plan. So if we go back, we remember that we were going to issue this in two phases and align that phasing to the project phasing when you were going to need the project funds. And just like we were assuming as part of that process, we were issuing forty-three point one, that was the par amount of the bonds today. We're going to come back in February of twenty-six right now, or the winter of twenty-six, that's the estimated closing day right now, and issue the remaining portion of the bonds, which is about fifty million estimated right now, when the remaining funds and as you kind of phase into the remaining part of your project. We ended up with twelve bidders this morning, which is really good. We like to see at least three. So we've got national recognition, all the major players were interested in the district's bonds this morning. And Key Bank ended up being the low bidder at three point five seven percent average interest cost. So that's really good, really good news to start. And I think the second bidder was Hilltop at three point five eight, so we had really tight bidding, and then the low bidder, or the high bidder, I will say, was Bank of America at three point seven seven, so we were under four percent with all twelve bidders. As part of those results, I'll just go to the, to the, to the last page here, because I think the important thing is, is we're on track, right? So the initial bond sales gets us off to a good start, and just like with anything, we wanted to have a good start to this process, and I think this is a good way to get started with some flexibility as we go into the rustier bond schedule. The orange bars represent the payments that are for the twenty twenty-four A bonds, and then we'll have the second issue coming, and this is kind of what it looks like from a picture perspective. But the estimates that were presented to voters when they see their final statement should be exactly where we were, where we were estimating. So those increases, when they get their final statements in March, are going to be right online with what was discussed with voters prior to the election, and we're matching up with that based on those estimated levies, and we're on track with the plan. I think the final piece, I'll just speed to it real quick, is the district goes through a rating process as part of this process, and the district is bringing on some additional debt. So as the district was going through the process, it was important of the work the district's been doing from a financial perspective over the last number of years, improving their financial position. And Moody's did affirm that rating even with the increased leverage, and is recognizing the work that the district's doing and affirmed their rating at double A two underlying, which is a really good rating, puts you in top echelon of school districts in the state of Minnesota, top fifteen percent if you kind of compare ratings for districts with S and P and Moody's ratings in Minnesota. I always say you guys are controlling what you can control in this part of the process. There's a lot of factors that you don't have control over, like size of school and property tax base, all those things. But the important pieces that you're controlling, you're doing a good job of controlling. So I think with that, I can answer any questions anybody has, but I think the main point is, right, is that the results today are setting us up good, right on kind of where we were hoping to be at this point in time, and gives us some flexibility as we go into that second bond sale and when the projects are really kicking off.
So what are you seeing as, I mean, I know it's a crystal ball looking down the road for the second part of this thing, what's?
Yeah, so we have estimates in our, what we showed here is still estimating a five percent true interest cost or average cost. So rates have really come up actually through, right up ahead of the election, and then they've really come down. So our timing, we're really at the low point in the last year right now where rates have been. So our timing is really indicative. And typically, we will see a little bit of dip at the beginning of the year because municipal bonds oftentimes are either getting paid off or they're callable at this point in time, so there's an increased demand or increased supply and demand, right? Decreased supply, increased demand typically, which lowers rates at the beginning of the year. So I think, just speaking as your financial advisor, we're in good shape, right, from the standpoint of what we're estimating, to make sure that we keep the plan within lines of what we told the voters prior to the election.
Would you say the fact that we had twelve bidders is indicative, say, of the market rates changing, or would it be the creditworthiness of the district itself?
I think it's both, right? The district's rating obviously plays into it, but I think speaking back to kind of this time of year is really when bondholders are, their bonds are being either paid off or called, so they're looking to get back in the market, which is normally good timing to be in the market at the beginning of the year like this.
And that would be the plan in two years then, correct? January, February, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, we'd be under, right now, that's what our estimate is, right? We'll be watching that all the way through if it makes sense to move forward or move back depending on how the projects' schedules are moving. We'll be have some flexibility to do that as well.
So Matt, we, so, I mean, the bids came in close to twenty-five percent below what we were thinking, so there's some, there's some money someplace there to be had, isn't there? Give them back to the.
Yeah, well, I think this is, like I said, this is step one, right? So as we go into step two, we want to have flexibility as we roll out the next phase of the plan, and I think that's the important message right now, right? We're in a good place with this initial bond sale, but we want to make sure we deliver on what we said as part of the election.
So how far out ahead of the next issuance do you guys have? Dust, dust off the model and make sure that the assumptions are right, if you're making any adjustments.
Yeah, we'll be watching this as part of the next levy cycle, even ahead of the next bonds' schedule, and we'll be, we'll be monitoring this all the way through. And if there, if for some reason there's a valid reason to move forward sooner, we could, we could look at that. But we won't be able to move a lot sooner, I will say, ahead of schedule. And there is some reason for that too, is we don't want to be paying interest on two bonds for this whole time either, so.
Great. Second.
Thank you.
Awesome. Good work.
Great news.
Yes. Thanks, Matt, too.
I could set up here, I just have one item tonight. All right, there we go. So my one item tonight, I wanted to come back and give the board an update on our MTSS process, MTSS, which is the multi-tiered Systems of Support Framework. And, and what I want to share tonight is that this is truly, truly important work. When we think about meeting the needs of all our kids, and if you look at that diagram up there, not only in academics, but in the socio-emotional realm, the behavioral health attendance room, all three go together to help kids be successful and to learn at the highest level. So we're into our second formal year of this, of this implementation. I just want to take you back to some of the reasons why we're doing this, where we're going with this process. So MTSS is something that you're going to hear more and more about across the state of Minnesota. The twenty twenty-three legislature talks about, they have all these mandates, they would use the words right now, strongly encourage school districts to implement a framework. I guarantee you, it'll be mandated soon enough. So we're ahead of the game with that. But just think about a way of being proactive versus reactive when kids are struggling. Trying to be proactive versus reactive when kids need more challenge with their academics. But we realize also, we've talked a lot about mental health, socio-emotional needs, behavioral needs, especially coming out of the pandemic, those things, we're not all kids, but some kids really accentuate. And we know if we can tackle the socio-emotional behavior pieces, kids can truly learn and excel. So this is what MTSS is about. You maybe have seen this pyramid before in different shapes or forms, but just think about that in the classroom at the bottom, that we want to hit eighty to ninety percent of our students with core quality instruction and any type of interventions that that classroom teacher's going to do with the classroom. And then when we see students that are still struggling, then they move up to the second tier, and this is targeted interventions where it might be small groups. And the interventions could be in academics, could be in socio-emotional support, behavior support. And then that top tier, that one to five percent, those are students that are truly struggling in some of, one of these domains. And this is what we've been trying to identify, what are we strong in, where are the gaps, and what do we do next to move this forward? And this graph, infographic at the bottom, it is to emphasize, sometimes MTSS, we think so much about kids that are struggling, but it's also for kids that need enrichment, they need challenge, that those kids also deserve the highest level of learning that we can back them to. So it's both ends of this spectrum. So just to give you a quick timeline of what we've done, in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we contracted with the University of Minnesota, CARRY, the Center for Applied Research Educational Improvement, and they did come out here, I believe, June twenty-twenty-two and gave the board a report. And we wanted to do a study with them, really to find out our strengths, our, our gaps around mental health, but also academic interventions, socio-emotional behavior supports that we have in place. That laid the groundwork for everything that we're doing now. So then in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, we started going into the implementation. And one of the things that we started focusing on is making sure these different types of district building teams were in place. We started talking about tier one, two, and three interventions, what do we strong in, where are the gaps? We talked about data-informed problem solving. So a lot of times, sometimes we have a gut about a student and we think that the student needs this. A lot of times that gut, professional, you know, feeling is correct, but we want data to back it up. So we started to implement processes in that area. Then we talked about. Then we talked about infrastructure and supports. Do the school schedules that we have support time for tier two and tier three interventions? We're still working on that. That's a challenge, because you don't want to be pulling students out of core learning, but they also need it out of town. So how do we do that? So we continue to work on it. And then fidelity evaluation, that is key. And that is something we're going to focus on this spring, looking back, the efforts that we're making, are they making a difference? So those are the big pieces that we're working on as we get going with this process. Last January, about a year ago, we had an all district, district-wide MTSS training. We had Cary Center out presenting, and this is where we had all of our licensed staff, all our paraprofessionals were there at the PAC. And we spent a full day understanding, defining a collective definition of MTSS and a collective understanding of what we mean by tier one intervention in our classrooms. So that was, that was a great day. And then we also developed in our buildings, we call them building maps, basically it is your playbook. It's really articulating the details of what's going to happen at each building site with their implementation. It's also identifying gaps and strengths and what we need to focus on. And then we started looking at last year, building schedules and staffing. So realizing that staffing comes with this, so how do we reallocate staff? Not always adding more FTE, but reallocating where we can to bring more support for tier two, tier three supports. So into this year, we had a whole, we had six, we do have six different goals that we're focusing on. And I'll just highlight a few of these. One of the things that was really important is that building teams were established last year. We wanted to make sure this year they're clear about their purpose and what they need to deliver on. So we had a focus on that this fall. We also did another training with Cary at our October workshop day. And we really looked at specific examples of tier one intervention, core instruction right in West Tonka. So what you see in these three domains are actual programs and systems we have in place in West Tonka. And we worked with staff on that, and we talked about that with staff, so they're clear what their role is in the classroom. And then we also knew that as we get going, every building is going to be at a little bit different level with this implementation. We're going to be strong over here, we're going to be a little bit weak over there. So in our contract with Cary, we developed a process with our two leads, Laura Potter and Dan Keneleth, that we would set up time for them to come out and meet with our building teams to address very specific problems or issues or challenges, and that continues today. And we have a great system, we'll run these, they'll make site visits out to the buildings, they'll focus on very specific targeted needs at each building site, all with the goal to move this whole framework implementation forward. So they've been great colleagues to work with and very much, very solid in their knowledge base when it comes to MTSS. And then really where the work is going to be now, the rest of the school year, is we have something called student support teams. Student support teams are the, the teams where we are working and talking about very specific students. Students that are really struggling, students that need additional supports that the gen at classroom cannot really provide. So we're looking and reviewing how those teams work. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the work on the fidelity of our implementation, we're going to be talking about that this spring. And reviewing, looking at there to say, are we making a difference? Are we making the roads the way that we want to do?
Who would be on like a student support team, certain teachers or counselors?
Yeah, it would be your, it would be your school counselors, social worker, psychologist, building principal. Sometimes, especially education teacher would be a part of that. Chemical counselor sometimes, depends on, depends on the need. So again, where I just wanted to end this, appreciate the board's support with this work. This is not a one-year implementation. We always tell the staff three to five years, but it's really focusing on the whole child. Their academics, their social emotional health, their behavior health. If we can figure out better and better ways of being very aligned, very systematic with how we support students, the learning is only going to go up, we're going to see more success for all our kids.
Is the staff taking ownership of this? Are they getting, I mean, that's, you're at, to me, you're asking a lot of teachers to say, okay, now it's not only the academic, but the behavior and social emotional that you're getting extra training in.
I would say what it is, is it's an organizational tool, it's a directional tool. It's making sure that the whole team understands the plays that we're running and we work well together as a team. And so it's ensuring that there's clear direction, good communication, training on what we expect, and there's a shared understanding of how we're working together moving forward versus assumptions. And so it's very intentional work under what we consider our main efforts, that we have to perform well to be an effective school. And so I think, I think as you put anyone's job all on a sheet, and don't get me wrong, this isn't all their job. It goes far beyond that. But when you can be more articulate about, this is how we're going to go about our work, and make sure people are trained on it, and people understand that when do we tier up? And how do we do that? And that we can do that well? It's, it's like, the example that I like to use is, I'm sure it was an old mound team when I was growing up. It was a Glencoe Silver Lake team that they all knew they were going to run it off base. And, but the team knew how to run, run that play, everyone knew what was expected, they ran it very well, and they kept on getting yards when they did it. And I think sometimes it's the gears on the machine that move us forward, and this is making sure we have some defined gears to do it. With that all being said, there is a lot on people's plate. I won't take that off. There's a lot on our teachers, a lot on our principals, a lot on our paras. But I think people feel better when they're not surprised and they're trained on what that is.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask, you did this training last year for district wide. As new teachers come on board, are they also getting this training?
Yeah, absolutely. So through, we start with new teacher orientation, and then the buildings, building principals really wrap those new staff into the whole building process.
But, but I think you, you raised one of the challenges, is that you love to say you got a set team, and here we are, and we're working, and you know that it's sometimes interchangeable parts. You have somebody, and then mid-year, you have a long-term sub, and you have so, that's part of the education system, too, of how do we work well with that. But that's definitely one complication, because we go very in-depth with one group, and then the next year, it's hard to replicate it in the same way, and so.
For agents.
Yep.
Did you say this was a, a formal recognition of the state of the MTSS system? Or did it come from like ground up or from top down?
It, it came from ground up, and it really started with concern about mental health of our students. That's where it started. Like we were seeing in our student body, not all students, but enough students that were struggling, impacting their academics.
Plus a lot of research is starting to show that, too.
Correct.
Unrecognized.
Correct.
So when we dug into it on MTSS, it made sense that we were looking at a chunk of it, and we should look at it more comprehensively. So we knew that by looking at the academics of students, that also plays into their mental health. Just as their attendance, their behaviors are sometimes an exhibit of it. And so trying to be more holistic of the whole picture, it's, to talk about mental health, you're also talking about how they're doing academically, you're talking about how they're doing socially, you're talking about are they coming to school or not? You're talking about if they're acting out, what are the causes of that?
But the organization is, I mean, you saw obviously a picture there of a very large auditorium, and I'm assuming people from districts, different school districts, and they're utilizing this model as more of a state statewide? Or in other words, districts are kind of being more uniform?
Yeah, so there's two things. So the picture you saw of the auditor, that is just West Tonka staff.
Okay.
That's just West Tonka.
That was on a workshop.
Yeah, that's a workshop day.
Right, but other school districts are kind of, I mean, we're not doing a patchwork of programs, we're doing a uniform statewide type of program.
And what you're saying is the state is saying, we strongly recommend you do this, but you think soon they will say.
They, they are, they're currently doing their own Minnesota MTSS framework. So Dan Keneleth, for example, he's one of the authors of the Minnesota version of the framework. So we're right, right in the fold with what we do here.
In a framework, you have authentic, unique things to each district. And so as the organizational tool and the conversation is more than statewide, it's national. What a district may apply, there's a lot of similarities. I mean, we share a lot of ideas and you try to apply those, but there are unique things to each district, what they're, they're doing.
Right, I mean, you can have uniqueness, but the onerous isn't on, as an individual district, it's part, you know, building a model.
Yes, yes, correct.
Well, that's why, to the point about the new teachers and things, to me, the framework is something that's timeless. Whereas in underneath the framework, you have individual goals that are timely, that you're trying to deliver on those goals. And you have to put some framework, or you have to put some time constraints on those goals. So when we say the MTTS, MTSS is a three to five-year thing, to me, it feels like, no, that's actually not true. It's really what we're doing going forward, and then there's certain things underneath that that we're trying to achieve. And so I think what would be really helpful, because I think for me personally, some of this is, I almost feel like we're sitting in a graduate level, you know, educational class sometimes when we review this kind of stuff. And it's really hard, even as someone who's married to a teacher in the district, to think about this, see all this, speak to that person, and then try to like, feel like, okay, are we making progress? And I know you have some, you know, fidelity pieces on there, and that's, that's part of what's coming, that's great. But I would really encourage us to get focused on those goals, even if they're small and shorter timeframe. Not big, we have to change the world goals, but the, how do we keep climbing Mount Everest, right? With the sort of idea that you don't really ever get to the top. We keep progressing and progressing, and as we're more established and as we're longer in tenure with this, we can be more advanced and more precise and specific with the goals, kind of a thing. But that would help me to understand kind of where are we, where are we at with all this? Because I, I sit back, and it's not to say it's bad work, it's all awesome. I just have a hard time absorbing like, where are we really at with all this?
Sure, sure. No, I appreciate that. And when I say three to five years, part of that is just the different pieces in voice.
I understand.
And then, you're right, those little incremental yearly goals are, will be important. All right, thank you.
Can you carry on one more question? So that slide that you had that had the symmetry of the students that are struggling on one side and those that needed challenge on the other?
Yeah.
All the, everything you've talked about today and the teams that are being set up, building and stuff like that, is it in place for both ends of the spectrum there?
To be honest, right now, the focus has been more on the side where the kids are struggling.
Yeah.
But we recognize we need to do all of it, both, both sides of that spectrum. It's, it's hard sometimes to do everything all at once. But we keep reminding ourselves, too, in our messaging, it's not just about kids that are struggling, but it's about kids that need enrichment and challenge, too. You know, sometimes, you know, when I think of our gifted talented students, they too can have social emotional needs, behavioral needs. And that, that, you know, and we already are addressing a lot of this. It's not like we're not doing anything for the struggling kids or the enriched kids. It's more that, as Kevin was saying, we're really formalizing what we're doing. We're aligning our practices across our building sites. We're recognizing what the gaps are and the strengths are, and what to do to really make it just a more solid system of supporting kids. But you're, you are correct, we, we need to address that, that challenge, and to, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
So it's, it's an exciting time of the year, because you get after winter break, and you think about your year, and you're all excited about the start of the year, and there's all the firsts and getting organized in the school year. And you get built up for homecoming, and before you know it, you got conferences, then you got a couple of weeks, and it's Thanksgiving, and it's the excitement of the holidays. And I say, right about now is the prime time for learning to take place in the school. It is the whole year, but you think you got these three weeks before spring break. And after you get on spring break, then people start getting a little bit of that itch to go on to the next thing. And so really, really important months for us, every month is, every day is, every hour is. But this time, we just see a lot of gains for our kids, because you settle in, you know your teachers, you know your routines, and you're moving forward. Now, obviously, at the high school, there's this semester change, there's some changes there. But overall, we're really excited about just getting back to work with our kids after a great break and going forward. I think the student report gave you a great report of all out of those sides of things. I would share that. We have a couple of workshop days coming up, as Mark has highlighted here this month, which we're really looking forward to. We've been doing a lot of work with the bond passing, and I appreciate the board's engagement. We got multiple design groups going on right now. Just thrilled about the high school redesign group. We've had now three meetings, we've had tours, we toured Oatana High School, which is a brand-new high school, we toured Shakopee, we toured Prior Lake, and we toured Delano. And it was really good to see all four schools, we had different takeaways from all. But the nice thing is, one, Paul Apikowski, he was the lead on three of those four, all but Delano. And so, one, the person that's taken our lead, he showed us work that he also led. Two, great facilities. Two of those, or three of the four, were all remodels or additions, too. And so not everything was a brand-new school, they showed how they expanded the schools. One thing that we're thrilled about this project is the new opportunities we're going to be able to get. And so I want to compliment Mark on his connections right now. He connected us with Spring Lake Park. They have a phenomenal nursing program, one of the best in state. One of their educators was hired up to MDE, who's overseeing some of this vocational work at that level. So for Mark to have this contact where he has a personal relation, professional relationship with the school that is known for running a really high-quality program, now which one of them has moved up to MDE, it's really, really been nice. And so we've been talking to them. We've had our first meeting with one of the doctors over at Ridgeview about those partnerships. We've reached out in the community to Harrison Bay and Lake Minnetonka shores, wanting to connect with them with our nursing program. Because when we say that this is not just about our kids, it's about the community, I really believe that. I believe that our community needs these CNAs, I believe they do need these EMTs, and we have connections here that want that to happen. And so I'm really excited about our start here. A school our size, we're going to know that we're not going to fill every class period of nursing. But what we also know is, you get it going, you develop a good program, it's designed the right way, it will definitely grow. And so we see a bright future of it. We have a lot of work continuing to do. And so I'm glad that that's not going to be operational till two thousand and six, the fall, because we have a lot of work there to do, but we have the right context. Want to share with you that we made many connections on the machining side. And so we talked to a local president of a machining shop. We've also talked to someone in this Machining Education Association that made a great contact with us at St. Francis. St. Francis Machining Program is actually selling parts, machining parts to the state. And they have this great, great, impressive system. Mark, I, Jolene are taking a tour there on Thursday, and excited to talk to John Boss and that program, and what that could possibly mean for our district. And so Mark has been doing a lot of research about other catalogs, of courses offered. But we really want to talk to a successful program that's been doing this to figure out what are the courses, scale it to our size, and make sure that it's not just vocational machining, which is very important, but that it can support things like engineering, like robotics, and get as much mileage out of that space as we possibly can. And so we're excited about that connection. We're also excited about the construction trades and looking at how we can take woods that's all indoor to bring it out to outdoor and starting that development. So we got a teacher that's on board, we're looking for programs, we've heard of several, and that's another one. That won't be as far of a reimagined, because we have a quality program, we're just going to expand it to construction, which I don't want to minimize that step, but that's a lot easier for us to envision than creating a whole new program like we'll be doing in these other cases. So really excited about that specific part. But really with our high school, it, it exists in all areas. I just want to share with the board how exciting this is for our staff. Our staff feels like they, they just feel a lot of hope. They're really excited that they're not going to be working around a facility, but the facility is going to push forward their. They're really excited that they're not going to be working around a facility, but the facility is going to push forward their work. They're really excited about the pride that they can have. We have two students on our focus group. You would be so proud to listen to these kids talk about our high school and what they'd like to see. But one thing that they want, they want the community to be proud of the space. They talked about how important that is, that you feel welcome, that you feel part of it, that you are excited that this is your school. And so, listening to kids talk that way is really exciting. But when we talk about the fitness space, when we talk about enlarging our undersized classrooms, when we talk about a teacher coming to my office saying, Mr. Borg, I've never complained about it, but I just want to say, pushing the cart from classroom to classroom, I'm glad to have my own room. I mean, there's a lot of these conversations that you don't hear enough as board members, that I just want to tell you, there's a ground well of excitement right now. Botan Padorf has been reaching out. He's excited about the legacy of the family name and how that gets to continue. And he feels so wonderful that that's able to happen. But, you know, he's constantly talking about how he can give back to this community, and so that you connect to other generations with this project. It's not just the kids, the parents of kids. We've had two meetings with our tennis group, really looking at maximizing opportunities for our families, not just with tennis, but also with pickleball. And so, we've had great conversations about this, and we're excited about having an improved space for it. We've had really good communication with community members, with parents, with coaches, and we're excited about getting that going here late this summer and this fall. Primary security in each of our primary buildings and early learning, that's a project that we prioritize, partly because we know we can do that this summer, the lead time on that didn't take as long. But also, the security was important for us. And so, we're excited about the lockdown capabilities in those buildings, some of the door sensors that can alert us that they're, they're open. We're also excited about, those buildings right now have secure entries, but with some of the glass improvements, it just makes it that much better. And so, as we talk about security, I have to recognize that it's a stress on board members, administration. Everyone connected to the school, when you see another report just after winter break, that we saw happen just by Des Moines in Iowa, where there was yet another school shooting. And you look at that, and I'm going to be sending out a communication again to families on Friday, because this isn't, this isn't just a, let's think about this once in a while. This is something that we always think about, and we think about, how can we ensure that our students are safe? And one thing that'll be in my message is that we're going to continue to push with students and parents, that if they see something, if they hear of something, if they see something on social media, even if they think it's a joke, you got to take it serious, you got to report it. The small school advantage, I really believe, can help keep us safe here, because people know us. Hopefully, we've developed relationships that they're comfortable reporting to us, and we know from past that that does happen. We just got to make sure it happens all the time, that if they see something concerning, they report it. Obviously, our relationships with our law enforcement is key to us keeping kids safe. We have another safety meeting with our fire chief and police chiefs next week, and we really talk about our systems. One thing that I'm excited that we're improving is our walkie system is changing. And that wouldn't have happened if we didn't have a capital projects levy, because these funds wouldn't be able to allow us this investment. But it allows us to, when we had the storm, when we were playing Orno, the cell tower got overwhelmed. We could not make phone calls to each other. What this system does is it puts us to the top of the cell tower. So FirstNet, because we're a government group that's dealing with safety, we get access that we can go to the top of the cell, so the queue. What's also great about it is Minnetrista Police and Orno Police both run these FirstNet systems. So we're going to have a connection not only that has better communication with each other, but it interwebs with our law enforcement. And so, we're excited about some improvements, because we know that communication and effective and timely communication can help save. And so, that's an improvement. Lastly, just these security improvements that we're doing here. Very thankful that our community has two SROs. I'm questioning, how many SROs are right for a school our size? Those are conversations that we have. Is that something that we need to look at increasing, or is that something that we feel good with the number that we are? Now, part of it is an insurance blanket, having someone that can do the right thing at the right time. But part of it is just the connections that our law enforcement has with our community, that's really positive. There's so many good things that come out of having our law enforcement in our buildings, for our community, for our kids, for our law enforcement. So we really feel good about that system, but expect a communication out from me this Friday on that topic. Lastly, I would just want to talk to a couple of the agenda items that you have here. You talked, Kathy covered the auditing contract. We're excited to bring to you what we believe is a competitive bid from Bergen KDB. The building bonds, that's an incredible, I mean, we, that's, that's really, like, when we're sitting in October, as you mentioned, it was going one direction, and then that it came down the way it is. That's nothing to do with the school district, it's just really good timing, and so I'm thankful for that. And I, I think he said it best, it starts our journey in the right place. Now, there's a lot of things. It could be that the second rate, it could be that you see again high inflationary, it could be that we don't get as many competitive bids. Our first goal with anything that we save is to do the projects that we said we're going to do. And so, this is, puts us in the first good step. And then, how do bids come in? Are we on mark? That's the next sign. And we got three years of this, so it's a long road. We know that some things are going to be great, and some things we wish would be better. I assume that's kind of the road that you go down. I'm just glad that we started on the right road right away. You see budget planning calendar, and it's just an update to you that in February, we're going to be talking about a revised budget and a budget goal. And just as information to you, we're going to have the second step of the levy taking effect next year. And so, you'd say, well, budget goal, you mean you're going to talk about reductions? And I'll say to you, every single year, every single year. Because if we want that second step of the levy to make it those next years, we got to challenge our budget. And so, what I do each year with our admin, and they do without me asking, but it's part of our system, is we try to look at, where are areas that we want to invest, and where are areas that we can do instead ofs, and where are areas that we should stop doing things and cut. And so, some of those are hard conversations, but they're conversations that are needed that'll help us stay financially healthy. And so, I don't expect a high number this time, but it is something that we have to continue to challenge. We have closing the open enrollment for Transition Plus. It's a very successful program, it's capped on size, and so we just can't expand that more. I think you can expect to see a cap on Transition Plus being pretty common here. So, so, just so you know what that means, if you live in the district, you're always going to be able to enroll in the district. But if you live outside the district, we can cap what the enrollment is.
So Transition Plus has, I mean, we started out down here, it's already topped where we...
We have a number that we don't want to exceed to be able to use the space well with the staff that we have to provide a quality program.
Because the whole idea behind that was that...
And we're at that level.
The sustaining itself with the dollar.
Well, sustaining is, it means that we're not sending to 287, and we save on that tuition, which, that cost saving is very significant. The second thing is seventh grade open enrollment. We set that this past year for sixth grade at 210. We're going to continue that at 210. I expect at eighth grade, that'll come off, and so at the high school, we won't need to cap that way. But in the middle school, we did that, we've done this three times now since in my time as superintendent, so over 18 years. Once was years ago in sixth grade, and then now, we did this group, sixth grade and seventh grade. Currently, they're right below 210, so we're taking enrollment, but if they do hit that mark, that's our high water mark. Part of that is to manage class sizes, because we don't want, we don't want to push class sizes higher than they should be for people that are here. And part of it is, is just the efficiency of space and also cost of an additional teacher at those thresholds. We feel like this is economical and also good for instruction. You see multiple adoptions of memorandum of agreements for earned sick and safe. That's a statute that was approved in this last round of legislation. We have contracts that address sick time, but the statute expanded that, and so, that was approved in May. Since that time, and still late in December, and I imagine it's going to still go on, people are trying to define what exactly this is and how it's applied. So that's why you're getting this in January. It's not that we forgot about it, it's that the statute was approved, it's complex, because what they're trying to do is take a state-wide approach. And for us who already have contracts with people, it becomes very complicated for the lawmakers and then those that are interpreting those laws, of how that all applies. We've gotten that guidance, we've set up a memo of agreement, so everyone understands what those statutes are. Our goal is not to exceed what our contract or statute is in this case, but it's really laying that out so that the unions understand what it is, and we both have agreement of how we're interpreting it. Pleased to say that with our groups, they believe that we're interpreting statute in a way that's consistent with them, which was the purpose for us to do this. A memo of agreement isn't quote unquote necessary, because there's a statute for it. We just wanted to make sure we had a shared understanding, so they didn't look at the statute in a different way.
And does that affect more than just contract groups? Because it's all employees, correct?
Yes, yes.
That all looking up?
Yes. Next, we have a contract with Newger. Exciting about this effort is looking at the West Tonka brand, and when I say West Tonka brand, that is both our academic, our athletic, it's our school colors. When we knew that we're going forward with a bond, we knew the time was right, with the investment that we're making in the high school and some of our outdoor activity spaces, that we ensure that the brand that we put up, it had a careful review, that we know our history, that there's some inconsistency there. How people use our logos vary, how people use our names vary, how people use colors even vary. And so, it's really important that we do a process that gathers input, that we listen, but we also shape a direction for our district, so that there's strength in it, that there's consistency in it. And also, when you invest the dollars that we're going to be investing in the buildings, we know that that wasn't, well, that's just what we had, but it was very intentional. And so, the timing of this was needed even without this bond work. That was, that was a concern of ours. But this makes it relevant to do now because of this work. And so, I've talked to Gary and I, Gary and I and Becca met with Newger, and I'll be the point person with this project, and then we'll have support. I'm excited that both Heidi and Dave have agreed to work with us on a work group for this, and so we'll have some board input, we're going to have some focus groups, other people will be involved. But I just wanted to let the community know that we're going to be looking at our brand. I see this as about a six-month project for us. But at the end, I'm not looking that things have to be sweeping changes by any means, so I don't want people to read into it that way. We just want to make sure that it's consistent and strong, and if adjustments need to be made, we make them now versus think we should have done it when we put up facilities. Lastly, we have the policies, and then there's a late memo of agreement, which I addressed earlier. And so, just would, probably lastly, just share that we had some visitors that spoke. I appreciate the dissension that some people have with this project, and I respect that. We work very hard to communicate this project. We are very committed to doing the project as we communicate it, not just because that's what we communicated, it's what we really believe is the best next step for this community. Safety and security, doing this maintenance, and also the redesign of the high school and the opportunities and the improvement in education that that's going to provide. Things like a middle school, early learning, grade reconfiguration space, those are things that this district will have to study over time. The timing of that will depend on enrollment, it depends on the community dynamics. There's going to be a lot of factors that that board at that time will have to take in consideration. But I feel like when we look at each one of the topics, outdoor activity space, when we look at space that we have for our kids, when we talk about grade configuration and different ways of meeting it, whether it's a new middle school, or whether it's adding space to buildings, we looked at those things. We looked at not just the activity spaces that we're addressing, we looked at a lot of different things. And those on the facilities committee meeting, we took a lot of time with it. And our ideas by the input that we took in, it grew, and it changed, and it adjusted. That's part of the process, it was a really good process. We surveyed and we tested it, we used demographic studies, input sessions. I feel really proud about the process that we took to shape the question, thankful it passed, but we're excited about that work. And so, with that, I respect that, the voices of those that disagree. I just would say that I, I also respect the process that we took in communicating this, but also in how we shaped the question.
Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries. Discussion items. The chair moves for approval of action item 8A, approval of a three-year renewal quote for auditing contract. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Chair moves for approval of action item, excuse me, 8B, resolution for the sale of general obligation school building bonds. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't need, hold on a second, I don't need to do a actual roll call.
Correct.
Correct, it's just, okay.
And I have Brian.
Yeah, Brian is the second? Okay, I got to fill out the paper to come in, so just want to clear. All right, thank you.
Good to go?
Yeah.
All right. Chair moves approval of action item 8C, approval of the 24-25 budget planning calendar, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Chair moves for approval of action item 8D, approval to close open enrollment for West Tonka Transitions Plus program. Is, or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Chair moves for approval of action item 8E, resolution to close grade seven to open enrollment for the 24-25 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 8F, adoption of memo of agreement regarding earned sick and safe time with West Tonka Education Minnesota. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 8G, adoption memorandum of agreement regarding earned sick and safe time for food services groups. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair moves for approval of action item 8H, adoption of memorandum of agreement regarding earned sick and safe time with Custodians Group. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Really going through the alphabet here. Chair moves approval of action item 8I, adoption of memorandum of agreement regarding earned sick and safe time with SSE Group. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item 8J, approval of branding services contract with Newger. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Chair moves for approval of action item 8K, approval of the first reading of policy 6171, instructional services, special education. 6171, instructional services, special education. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carries? The chair moves for approval of action item 8L, adoption of a memorandum of agreement regarding earned sick and safe time with the E O E Group, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody else have any other business they want to bring up?
Yeah, the one thing is, on the Westonka Education M O A thing, do I have to recuse myself on that particular one? Do we think, need to redo it without me?
If you're more comfortable, you can.
I don't care, I'm just asking for a formality perspective.
I...
Can you be objective?
I, I think seeing that it's a statute that you're, I mean, we are coming onto an agreement, but it's the statute that you're approving. If you prefer, we can go back.
No, I don't prefer it at all, I'm just curious. Okay. Good question. All right, everybody, chair moves for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You do adjourn. Have a good one, everybody.